Purchasing and upgrades, and again, we just throw a little bit at it every now and again and try to upgrade, so. Coming out of general fund. And our last one is some PPE or bunker gear, personal protective equipment. We are in a 10-year replacement with that as well. And so, we are, we're thrilled. This is some reappropriation, some funds that we had from last year, and some replacement. That's all for me.
Good morning. Brad Schutte, IT manager. I'm here to present our technology projects for this year. First and foremost, some of these are carryovers from last year, our city website redesign. We now have our design that we're moving forward with, and so, we've moved into the second phase of that project. We're hoping that the remaining work will be completed in the February to March timeframe, and this was paid for out of sales tax. The budget was about $60,000, and we actually came in just under $10,000 short of that, so we're in the right direction there as well. Wi-Fi in city buildings. As of the time of making these slides, this project had not been completed. In the last week, we have completed this project. We now have Wi-Fi in all city facilities, both guest and secure network for city staff. So, the budget for that was about $38,000 and came out of our IT Internal Service Fund. Chamber improvements, audiovisual improvements to council chambers. A lot of the equipment had become aged, and we had, it was mostly analog equipment that we've begun replacing with digital equipment, sound recorders, the new monitors on the dais. We just signed a recommendation letter for the vendor that's going to do the final piece of work, the rewiring, bringing everything up to HD quality, fixing cameras, putting, fixing speakers that are out, and just a general overhaul of the equipment here in the chambers to bring it up to date. We were hoping that that work will be completed in the December-January timeframe, and that $19,000 came from sales tax funds. The upgrade of our Click2Gov website software. This is the software that's used to handle online payments to the city for mostly utility bills and some permitting at this point in time. The upgrade is going to improve the citizen's ability to pay those payments, but also add the ability to collect payments for other things that are currently not available. It will remove the restriction to Internet Explorer, so we'll be open up to other browsers and allow those to use for online payments, which is something we hear a request for. So, this is something that'll handle that as well. The implementation and training for this, we've had a few things that we've had to put in place before we can actually make this upgrade. We're moving forward on those now, so we're hoping that the January, January/February timeframe will be the beginning of the implementation with the completion, hopefully, beginning to mid-April. This was also out of our Internal Service Fund, it was about $8,400. Those were projects, up to that point, were projects that had existed in FY '15 that we've rolled forward into 2016. These remaining three are projects that are new to this year, the first of which is replacement of our phone system. We currently run a 13-year-old PBX system, which has passed its prime by a few years, and we're looking to improve to a voice-over IP system that's going to give us a variety of means of communication that's going to improve our ability to work together and collaborate. This project, we're interviewing manufacturers right now. We hope to make a selection of a manufacturer and put it out to bid for resellers in the December timeframe with a completion of installation in April or May of 2016. And this is also out of sales tax funds. The budget's about $240,000, but we hope we're going to be able to do better than that.
We need it badly.
Yes, we do.
Like Dave says, when it works, it works.
We've had some challenges over the past month with the phone system, and we're hoping that it'll hold on for that four or five months that it's going to take us to get it replaced. But we've got a great staff working on it, and we've got a great support that we pay for that is going to help us go. We'll do everything we can to expedite that, but it can only be moved so fast, unfortunately. The next item is upgrade of our city storage systems. Currently, all of our storage is, whenever we purchase a server, we just buy storage with that server. So, our server, our storage is all decentralized and not as easy to manage, not as easy to organize, and definitely not easy to back up for disaster recovery. We do those things, but it takes us a lot more effort than it needs to. With this new system that we've purchased and are putting in place, it's going to trim our backup time by about 80%. We're going to be able to do it a lot faster, which is going to have us in a lot better position to deal with any type of disaster planning and disaster recovery that we may end up with. The purchase has been completed. We're hoping that the installation will be complete before the end of the calendar year. This was a combination of sales tax and IT Internal Service Fund dollars for a total of $200,000. I think this is our last, well, there's one more after this. This is a replacement of servers that have reached their end of life, critical application servers that it's, we just don't, we can't tempt fate by dragging them out any further. So, these servers will be used to replace the database servers that are currently being used by a number of our applications. This was Internal Service Fund for a total of $45,000. And then, also, our public safety CAD and RMS, our records management software. Again, the servers that they run on are also near end of life and need to be replaced, and are part of a regular cycle of replacement that we have for physical servers that still remain in the city. These servers are a little bit bigger, a little bit more powerful servers, so the price of them came in at about $68,000 and should be in place by the spring. And I'll turn it over to Tom.
Good morning. Tom Jackson, Utilities Department. Save the best for last, or I should, maybe I'll say the most expensive for last.
There you go.
This is a very broad brush overview of the processes in building the groundwater RO treatment plant, and I've just thrown in some completion dates and percentages complete at this point in time. The preliminary design report is 100% complete. We got it a couple of months early from Tetra Tech. We were anticipating a 2015 design, but they are a little ahead of schedule. The wellfield design was completed in March. We were hoping to have it complete in March of 2015, but shazam, we got it complete earlier this month. That went very well. Injection well design was complete in October and submitted to DEP. In late October, we have our first round of RAI questions, and we're working on answering those as we speak. RO plant design, we anticipate our 60% design to be in our hands prior to the end of the year. We're anticipating the first part of December, the last part of, oh, I jumped ahead. 30% plans were updated in October 2016. 60% plans we'll have before the end of the year, about the end of December, and we'll be bringing those forward. Wellfield construction, as you recall, last meeting, we hit a little glitch with that. We're probably about six weeks behind. They are drilling a holes, a hole in the ground today, so we're actually drilling the first test well today. The casing was set last week, and we're going to take advantage of the good weather and the dry weather to hopefully catch up and make up some of that time. I don't anticipate that being off schedule by the end of it. We have some places we can make up time in that case. Injection well construction is not scheduled to actually, the March 2016 is the completion of the wellfield construction, and that is even, we're holding back three wells, and we'll decide at a later date if we were going to complete them under this phase or we're just going to do the initial wells, because we're waiting on the test results back from conversion of the ASR well, so we have to be able to determine what their yield's going to be to see if we add the additional work. If we add the additional work, the total completion will be in March of 2016. Injection well construction is not scheduled to begin until April of 2017. Nothing has been done on that, and the actual RO plant construction itself, the final step is scheduled for April of 2018 to be complete, and we've begun nothing on that. As you're aware, that's Utilities Fund, legislative grant money, and hopefully, Water Management District grant money all cobbled together for this project. It's $32.1 million project. Yes?
Tom, the RO plant construction, April 2018, is that completion of the RO?
Yes.
When do you anticipate starting construction of the RO plant?
About a year earlier, probably about March or April of 2017. It should take about a year for the mechanical in the building.
Okay.
Great.
I will report when Councilman Wine and I were at the Water Alliance Summit last week, I talked with Mike Coats. The inter-local agreement that you signed off on a couple of meetings ago will be on their agenda in December, and Mike anticipates it'll be signed. And then, our next step is to get it to the Water Management District, to their executive directors, so that he can, this was the last step to clear way for the 50% funding, and we'll see where it goes from there. Hydrobiological monitoring report is a condition of our withdrawal permit, our water use permit from the Water Management District. We are required annually or monthly to collect data from 14 sample sites, both in Shell and Prairie Creek, as well as in the Peace River, to determine impacts of our withdrawal on the ecological system. These samples include surface, mid, and bottom measurements, physical, chemical, and biological samples are taken every month. Every five years, we have to complete a very massive report analyzing all that data to determine if there are impacts from our withdrawal. The PhD, the biologist that has been doing these reports since the beginning for 35 years is in very ill health and will not be able to do the report, so we had to scramble around and get, find a firm that could take all of the previous data and the previous reports and the existing data and synthesize it, figure it out, and generate a report for us. We're working with the district. We're not going to make the final deadline of December 2015 because Dr. Montgomery's condition, and he found out late that he has terminal cancer, and what a fine man, and what a loss to our industry, Ralph Montgomery. So, we are working with the district. They are, they understand that. He does all the reports for the district, so everybody's going to be a little behind. We anticipate we'll complete the report probably in January and submit it. That's about a $50,000 project, and that comes out of our Utilities Fund.
And what is contained in the report, once again, Tom?
It's looking at all the physical, chemical, and biological data and determining impacts to, looking at historic data and qualities to determine if there are impacts in either of the creeks or in the Peace River from our withdrawal. Now, I will say that I'm going to go back to and open our, see if I can open our permit back up with Water Management District and get that report reduced. It is just, I mean, Dr. Montgomery made it so effortless, and we got in and looked at all the stuff he was doing, and I may seek David's help on this, to get that, get that condition reduced, because we have 35 years of reporting, and 35 years that show zero impact to the Peace River, so I'm going to try to get them to reduce that requirement. Water treatment plant, raw water pumping station improvements. I had always intended, as you know, we, we're a surface water supply. We draw our water out of Shell Creek. The raw water pumping station is very old. About 15 years ago, we no longer could get parts for our pump controllers, and last year, the people that fabricated parts for our pump controller said they did not care to fabricate us any more parts. I had always hoped to do this in conjunction with the RO plant, but I can't wait two more years. We're in a critical situation with this. We are actually completed the design of re-powering our water, replacing the pumps and the controllers for our raw water pump station. There's three 250 horsepower vertical turbines, any two of which are capable of pumping 10 million gallons a day rate. The design was completed in September. We'll turn it over to procurement in March to get started on it, and we expect the construction to take about a year after we award, or about March of 2017. That's a $1.8 million budget assigned for that, and that's been in our CIP for a while, but I was hoping to keep it dovetail it with the work we're doing with the RO.
We need the pumps.
Got to have the pumps. As long as the fire chief has a new pumper, we can get water to town, but, so please fund his pumper as my backup, would you? A couple of years ago, I think it was, Sharon, help me with those dates, you approved a $1.1 million ongoing line item for R and R repair and replacement of water and sewer lines, for aging sewer lines, both gravity and force mains. That is ongoing every year. If you've driven near MLK on 17, you see the work that's being done. Our city manager was, has been out there several times. We have a big emergency repair going on there because of some issues with some gravity lines that serve a building there, so we're actually well pointing and replacing, repairing that as we speak. But that comes out of this fund. That's what this fund is for. Those lines, I went back and looked at the records, those were gravity lines that we put, that we put a liner in 25 years ago, and now the liner has failed.
We got some good life out of that, though.
Pretty good life. I'm still unhappy that the way it failed, and we've gone back to the manufacturer and made them aware of it, because the liner actually came loose and collapsed, and when it did, it just blocked the flow in the line. And we suspect, we have quite a few lines that we use that same liner on, so I may be coming back, we may be spending some more R and R. The problem with that particular job is it's deep, it's very deep. It's beyond the capabilities, safe capabilities of the staff and the equipment we have. I won't let them go much below eight feet, and these lines are 15 feet deep. So, we had to get a contractor that's special underground guy that can go that deep.
Yeah, we contacted seven contractors that couldn't, wouldn't touch it, and then we finally came up with this one.
Yeah, some, those are some of the deepest gravity lines we have in our system.
We don't have a lot of gravity in Florida, do we? At least not here.
No, not too much. Wastewater Treatment Plant roof replacements. The last, the roof was removed from our wastewater treatment plant by Hurricane Charlie. The contractor that repaired the roof, who I will not mention, but we have since sued, did a horrible job in repairing, replacing the roof, and it's time to replace it again. It is, we've got, on a good rainy day, we have, we have to procure additional buckets to catch all the drips and the leaks and the problems with that roof. So, we slated it for this budget year, it's going to be about $200,000. The roof was also done at the water plant at the same time, but it was a different contractor, and there's no issues with that roof at all.
But that's a great way to collect water for the.
Yes, it is, and we dump it, we dump it right back in the reservoir. That's not mine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into the next topic, we're going to take a five-minute, so we'll be back at 11:21. Really? Great.
But Doc.
Well, still, does it?
Ten years.
Right after the hurricane.
A doc, and then you should, and more.
We are back in session and continuing on with our progress report on capital improvement projects, additional harbor access.
Good morning. Mark Garing, Public Works. We're working currently on this project. This is the additional harbor access. We were tasked with working with a consultant, Hans Wilson, in reevaluating the different possible routes for this access, and with all the different issues and the possibility of different routes, we've come up with a matrix draft at this point as a way of ranking the different options and giving some weight to what the different obstacles are in accomplishing each route. And we'll be glad to take your discussions, your direction. If you'd like, I can go over the routes, go over the matrix, but you, I'll have them in your packet, and I'll take your direction.
I guess one of the points that was brought up are why are they weighted in different number groups?
We really didn't give it a lot of thought of what those numbers are. It was more a ranking of how certain we can be of the number that we're giving it. The ones that have five ranking, we just aren't certain of that. There's, it's a nebulous target that we don't know, and you really won't have a good answer for those until you go through the process. Some of those that have the one to 10, we can get very good ideas of where, how much, how much is it going to cost to dig a channel? That's, it's a construction number that we can bank on based on previous projects. Whether or not Mr. McQueen is going to deal with us on property, whether or not, all these other issues, you really don't know until you've actually gone through the process. And when it's all done, we can actually go through and determine how much each of those should rank, and there's nothing at the bottom of this that says that the lowest score or highest score is the option that we have to choose.
May I have the floor? Very good question was raised to me during my individual meetings regarding the cutting into, toward the Alligator Creek and mitigation of Alligator Creek. All the other areas show 4,000 feet going right directly to the harbor, but we show a small piece going just Alligator Creek, and stopping at Alligator Creek gave them the assumption that Alligator Creek is ready for this traffic and is, what was the, why didn't it go all the way down to the harbor itself? That was a very good question, and I don't know why it wasn't addressed, it's just it's...
Well, we think we've addressed that, and we've not concluded that Alligator Creek needs to be widened. That's something that needs to be looked at, and we're working on that. In our vessel traffic impacts, what we're doing there is we're going to look at the width of the channel, the boat traffic that travels through that channel, the width of other channels and other boat traffic throughout southwest Florida for this entire study that we have that was done by the Sea Grant, to try to determine what a proper channel width is for a certain number of boats. Sort of as in traffic studies, how many lanes do you need to get so many cars through per hour? And that's what we're going to try to approach, and that's, that's the item that we've thrown that under.
If it was decided that there's mitigation necessary for Alligator Creek, then that would be added to the cost of the.
Oh, most certainly, yes.
Of the estimates of the projects?
Most certainly.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Well, I'm going to have to insist that the options four through six need the lines, the dotted line needs to go all the way out to harbor, to marker one, because that is a part of the evaluation process, is a part of the overall cost, and if it's not, then the matrix is not going to include all of the factors that need to be considered. I've stated this before in a public meeting here at City Council. We've heard testimony from our residents. It's a known fact that Alligator Creek, part of the channel is 25 feet wide. It has nothing to do with numbers of boats. It only has to do with two boats. If two boats can't pass, then we have a navigation problem. So, boat, the quantity of traffic isn't the issue. So, I have to say, if we're going to have an apples-to-apples comparison, then it's important that we consider and have that line drawn all the way out to marker one.
Comments, questions for...
Were you going to be considering that in any event?
Well, I heard Mark talk about that we will consider it, but when you look at this and you look at all the alternatives, as residents have pointed out, and you look at the number of feet to be considered to go all the way out to the harbor, actually, I would say that in any of these, they need to consider what would need to be a marker, because if, let's go just to the Barge Canal, for example. Right now, to the Barge Canal, it shows going out to the harbor, but I would venture to say, we need to overlay a harbor map that shows depths, because you have to take it all the way out to where the depth is, that where you can then safely navigate. So, any of these should, would need to go all the way out into the harbor, further than what is actually on here. So, if we're going to have an apples-to-apples comparison in an evaluation matrix, and then we're going to give scores to it, we have to consider it. We have, you know, it, to me, it's an ethics issue that we have to provide the best data possible.
Well, maybe the language, like in the travel time, do you have any suggested changes? I mean, how do you want?
I would say.
Drawn a line on the map, fine, we can all agree to do that, but do you have any wording that you want to say, like travel time? Would that be a suggestion?
No, it's not on the matrix itself. What it is, is when you look at these channel alternatives map.
Right.
And you look at the maps, and they show the diagram and the number of feet that it takes that have to be considered. And then, we show, and because it's on here, channel length, and channel length, and it's going to be the very first item, the very first column, is channel length, and you're going to give a weighting of from one to 10. And if you look at the channel length on, on any of the first three, they're in the 3,800-foot range kind of thing. You get to items four through six, and all of a sudden, you have 816 feet, and so, you're going to give a 10 because it's really short, when in fact, if you extend those lines all the way out to marker one that have to be considered, you're talking a lot longer. And so, this is, this isn't showing the whole picture, and I think that that's what, what I've heard and what I've pointed out before, that Alligator Creek is, when this project is to consider alternate access to the harbor. The harbor is not Alligator Creek. Alligator Creek has issues, and we all know, those of us that use Alligator Creek, when we have two boats passing, sometimes it can be tricky, especially when we have lots of fishermen in the harbor or in the creek. For a boat to come out that is a wide, a much wider beam, it's going to create issues. So, there's going to be dredging that's needed to be a part of this overall project. I realize, you know, that Mark said, yes, the cost of dredging to widen the channel in Alligator Creek would have to be a part of this overall project. We need to show that. We need to show that line that's, so that we are as apples-to-apples as possible.
Mark, as far as ponds, we already have ponds. How far do we go on ponds inlet as far as, you know, what we take care of? How far do we go out when you're talking markers and navigational depths? How far does the city take that inlet?
We just recently dredged that. We went all the way out to markers one and two, but we did get county funds or MAC funds to do the dredging because it was a community project, wasn't all borne by the residents of PGI.
So, would that, if we put something in here all the way out to marker one, would that satisfy some of your...
Yes, what I'm, you know, let's just use alternative four, for example. The dotted line then needs to be continued on down Alligator Creek, out to, out to marker one, to show this is what needs to be considered as a part of this project, so that it really makes it as apples-to-apples as possible.
Okay, so you want the dotted line completed all the way down to the harbor?
Yes.
Is everybody in agreement with doing that?
I agree.
Is that fine? Okay, so we can do that. We can draw the line?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we asking to eliminate the vessel traffic impacts item and assume that Alligator Creek is widened, or are we adding a new option, one, Alligator Creek's widened, one, Alligator Creek not widened?
I don't think that.
I think Alligator Creek has to be widened.
Alligator Creek would have to be widened, period.
Regardless of the traffic.
If you were to say Alligator Creek is not going to be widened, then in my opinion, and I'm not against the bird cut-through project, it's, if Alligator Creek is not going to be widened, then that is, I would have to say that you really shouldn't consider the bird cut, because you're going to create navigation issues, and navigation safety is extremely important.
I mean, I would, relative to Alligator Creek and increased impacts to vessel traffic, you're still looking at that, correct? Or you...
That was our intention, yes.
So, that was, is going to be part of the analysis? The vessel traffic, that, we still want that part of the analysis?
I would, I would like to see as part of the analysis widening Alligator Creek to 50 feet as well.
Yeah, I think that that has to be, that's why I brought up. Yeah, I think that that has to be, that's why I brought up the issue, um, before this. That whole, it, you know, the Alligator Creek cut starts where you start at the, at the, uh, whatever the point of the canal and it goes all the way out into the harbor because there, that is, that all has to be included as a part of the, the project.
Yes. I mean, I don't know that fifty feet is the number. I don't know that we have the expertise to determine that, but it should be part of the analysis.
Mm-hmm.
I agree, that's why we have a consultant.
Yeah, right.
And staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Other than that, are we okay with the matrix?
I have one more.
And from my understanding, staff will be completing this and the engineer will be completing this and then it'll be brought back to council for our review. Is that correct?
Uh, very close to that. Uh, the engineer will be completing it and we'll be guiding him and supplying him with the information that we have.
So then we'll just end up with one, basically, not two?
Yes.
Okay, but you both work together to complete that consensus?
I miss both, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be a consensus between the engineer and the staff to come up with the completed ranking for our review?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question then, uh, relative to vessel traffic impacts. Um, the, we can talk about vessel traffic, but in some ways, uh, the only constant that it seems that we, we know, that we can rely on are the number of properties that, that have access to this. So when I look at what Mitchell Austin had indicated on a previous map, that there are currently over, uh, in the neighborhood of three thousand properties that have access and use Alligator Creek, whether or not they have boats, but it's, those are all potential boat owners. Um, at buildout, the bird section is, uh, twenty-eight hundred, uh, plus properties. So that's a, a constant, that twenty-eight hundred. All twenty-eight hundred don't have boats, uh, won't use the boats, but it's the only constant that we have.
But I would argue that the three thousand that you're saying that are already on Alligator Creek, I don't know that they're all potential boat owners.
No, I, I, I said that.
Okay.
I agree with you.
All right.
I agree with you. I'm just saying, should that be a consideration as to the potential number of properties? Because that was shown in a previous, that was shown in a previous map, uh, of, uh, the south part of, uh, PGI, that there at buildout, over forty-one hundred properties that would use Ponce Park, or Ponce Park, Ponce Inlet. Um, and that by using another cut, another, that would, um, alleviate some, some congestion at the Ponce Inlet. And so what I'm saying is, if there are, if there are currently three thousand properties that can use Alligator Creek and we're going to add another twenty-eight hundred to Alligator Creek, we're now creating a possible, um, traffic issue, potential traffic issue in Alligator Creek that's far worse than, than Ponce Inlet. And, and that's just, it's, I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it, it's just, I'm just saying, I think it should be a part of the evaluation matrix.
I think the vessel traffic, we already have the information, is pretty substantial. I mean, they came here and did a presentation on, on what they did to come up with that data. I mean, I, I don't feel that all of those properties are, are potential boat owners. I just don't.
Well, I understand that.
But I think the point is, is that if you develop the bird section to its completion, there's going to be some ratio of that, those people that have boat owners-
Right.
Relative to what bird store has. So if there's three thousand, three thousand, you're potentially doubling the traffic on Alligator Creek intuitively. Yeah, you don't know that for sure, but that, you know, i- if, if sixty percent of us own boats, then it's likely that the new, new property, over sixty percent of them also will own boats.
To some extent, that's, that's the point. The, the, the buildout of, of, uh, the bird section has been delayed over the years and I think a lot of it has to do with access to the water. So if there is access to the water, then there certainly will be more development and there will be more people using Alligator Creek if that's the ultimate path or a different path to get out into the harbor. That's the point of the whole thing so we can get-
Exactly.
I understand that, but what, I think what I'm saying is the only, we can look at vessel traffic right now, but the vessel traffic doesn't, in, does not, um, can't say just because the vessel traffic is what it is, that that is what the potential is. And I'm saying that at buildout, that it, it will look at how many potential, uh, properties might use that versus another one. And I think that, because we're looking at bottlenecks, potential, creating potential bottlenecks. And what I heard in part of the testimony, uh, from people who say it's important that we have an alternate access is that there is a congestion problem at Ponce. And there is a potential congestion problem at Ponce. And if the, if it's forty-two hundred properties at Ponce can use Ponce, well, we're going to be creating one at the Alligator Creek that fifty-eight hundred are going to be able to use.
Do we want to change the language for, for vessel traffic impacts or not? I'm okay with it the way it is.
I'm okay with it the way it is. I just want to make a comment that, uh, Nancy's points are very well taken and it also, to me, strengthens the case that if we do go forward with a cut, then we need a fifty-foot wide canal.
I just think it needs to be a part, I'm not, it just needs to be added as a, an added, um, element in the evaluation process.
I think the point is-
Can it just be a, a point of fact that these, these many property owners could potentially be users of, I mean, it's, it's more of a factual-
It is fact. It absolutely is fact, but then you have-
Couldn't we even find out how many people are in the MSBU for, for the county? I mean, those are the people that are-
Yes, there are.
Okay, so use that number.
About twenty-five hundred people are in the MSBU. There are additional properties that are not in the MSBU that also use Alligator Creek because they come in through the south Alligator Creek Channel. That's not part of the-
I mean, how would we go about trying to find that? We don't know if they do or if they don't.
The only constant we would have is, is knowing exactly how many are in the MSBU, but-
Use that number and just have it as a matter of fact, that those, that many people pay for the maintenance of the Alligator Creek in the analysis. I mean, that's, I don't know that you need to rank it.
Well, I think what I'm saying is, I think there needs to be, um, you could come up with a ranking based on the number of people that would use this potential, um, alternate access so that it might give a, a view of how are we offloading ponds and, and what the impact is off of ponds and what would this one, each of these considerations, uh, or the alternatives, um, are going to have a different impact.
Maybe the engineer would have a professional opinion on that, but we, to, to say, how are we offloading ponds? We don't know what people's voting preferences are. It depends on where they live.
Right, and that, well, I, I would agree with you there.
And should we identify the types of boats that they're going to be using? Is it going to be a sixteen-foot powerboat or is it going to be a, a, a catboat with a, with a twenty-five-foot beam? I mean, would if we really start to try and get, you know, down, down to the nitty-gritty here, you know?
In the weeds.
I, I, I agree with the fifty-foot wide canal, it makes perfect sense. Uh, and I'm okay with, you know, proceeding on that basis and just doing a, a vessel count. What, what boats are, you know, what were actually is happening over there.
I mean, go ahead, Camp.
Uh, I'm okay with the fifty-foot. I think that dumping, you know, a wa- into a, a narrow channel is, is not a good idea. But aren't we just looking at, um, okay, an alternate access, the whole place built out, what could be the potential of boats finding the safest, most navigable area?
Right.
I mean, isn't that what we're doing?
Yeah, that's what we're trying, that's what I think we're trying to do.
Absolutely. I'm just, all I'm really doing is just, um, sit bidding considerations.
Right. No, no, I, I agree. I like the fifty-foot, but I mean, the rest of it, that's what you're looking at, right? I mean, once, I mean, now we have the fifty-foot which might, you know, going all the way out to the harbor. Um, but as far as the rest of it, that's what we're looking at. What is going to be safe? What's going to be the less impact, environmental impact?
What's going to be permissible in the first?
Right.
Well, yeah, that's a factor too.
We still have the cart a little bit before the horse is.
Yes.
We'll just start to have the horse catch up.
Well, we're trying to bless their process. That's all we're trying to do.
Right, right.
Well, I think adding the fifty-foot is, you know-
Well, there's three people that want fifty-foot minimum on Alligator Creek, so I think we better include that.
May I ask a question? Uh, can we then direct the engineer to do that in his study so that he's not spending time looking at what a proper width would be?
I don't feel comfortable with that because I'm not an engineer. I mean, I would want to, I would want his professional opinion, but I can't even get there from here in my boat, so I mean-
You know, you know, why don't we wait and let's hear what the engineer comes back with? If we are not happy with the findings that he comes back with, we can change it. We can have a conversation and we can-
We can.
Put some different criteria in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with not necessarily specifying that you have to have a specific width of the channel. It's that it needs to be, the whole channel needs to be included in the, in this evaluation. So my, my, um, my point earlier was that these dotted lines, I know it looks, it's the dotted line, but the dotted line needs to go all the way out so that we make sure we include all of that in this evaluation so that it's as apples-to-apples as possible.
So why don't you advise him, there's talk of fifty feet, but we would still like his professional opinion?
Okay.
So he's not going all over the place. I mean, we obviously have agreed that twenty-five is not going to cut it.
Right.
Get it? Cut it? Um, so I guess we're there, so we can at least direct him in that vein. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay? And we're okay with this language? I'm okay with it, Gary?
I'm okay.
Okay.
I still think that we need to add, include numbers of properties that have access to these.
Well, we, we know what they, we know what they are, right? Twenty-five hundred plus the bird section.
But as part of the evaluation.
Any support for that?
I, I'm, I, we just want to wait and let's hear what the engineer comes back with. And we can, if we're not happy, we can always have another conversation about it.
We can, yeah. Because, I mean-
I'm sure we will.
It's so variable depending on where you go, it's going to affect different numbers of people. So I guess when we get the ranking back, that can be part of the consideration.
Well, once you pick the route, you'll know exactly.
Yeah, you'll have a good, a better idea.
There's maybe one more criteria that you might want to include in the matrix. And that would be how much maintenance dredging is going to be required based on the location and the configuration?
Yep, that sounds good.
Good suggestion.
Good point.
Good suggestion.
That it? Everybody's okay with adding that? Okay, so we think this is coming back February, March? Is that the idea or, that's what I heard, I-
That sounds reasonable, yes.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Joan, you're up next, please. You can, you can airgun blast away.
For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design, and I have with me today Ray Judah from the Florida Coastal and Ocean Coalition, Erin Handy from Oceana, and Ruth Scott from the Sierra Club. Mr. Judah and Ms. Handy will provide a brief presentation on two processes that may be harmful to our marine environment and oceans. The topics they'll be discussing are the seismic, the seismic airgun blasting and fracking. The groups emphasize the implementation of an ecosystem-based approach to coastal and ocean management as well as recognition of the important linkage between the health of Florida's economy and the health of its beaches, dunes, coral reefs, mangroves, and wetlands and other natural resources. With that, Mr. Judah? Okay, I will start with, uh, Ms. Handy from Oceana.
Thank you, Erin Handy, Florida Manager for Oceana. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you about protecting your beautiful bay, your waterways, the marine life that lives in them, and your local economies that depend on them. Uh, seismic airgun blasting is used to search for oil and gas deposits under the ocean off our coasts. Um, a ship toes an array of, um, seismic cannons behind it, up to about thirty-eight to forty-five cannons per ship. They release dynamite-like blasts of air into the water. These blasts penetrate through the ocean, through the ocean floor for thousands and thousands of feet and relay a sound image back to monitors on the surface to give a picture of, um, the possibility of areas of oil and gas deposits under the water. Um, this is a picture of a seismic, um, airgun surveying ship. Um, below, you can see the picture of the, um, air cannons and the monitors that are pulled, um, behind them. Seismic airguns release dynamite blasts of compressed air every ten seconds, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, for weeks and months at a time. Um, once a company is permitted, they are not required to share the data with, um, the federal government, with the state government, with the public, or with, uh, competitive companies that are searching for oil and gas. So blasting can occur in the same areas repeatedly. Um, the Department of the Interior was required to do an environmental impact study before the consideration of any permitting to seismic airgun blasting companies. Their own environmental impact study states that injuries would occur to as many as a hundred and thirty-eight thousand whales or dolphins, potential, um, disturbances of up to three, thirteen and a half million to marine mammal behavior like mating, feeding, and communicating, potential temporary and permanent hearing loss, abandonment of habitat, strandings and death, disruption of loggerhead sea turtle nesting. And we had a record year in sea turtle nesting in Florida, um, this year and certainly don't want to see these, um, these successful recoveries of marine mammals, um, and other sea life endangered. Impacts on larval fish that can contribute to decreased recreational and commercial fishing catches and impacts to the only known calving ground of the North Atlantic right whale. Um, these are the areas that are currently approved for potential leasing for seismic airgun, um, and oil exploration and, and potentially drilling to occur. And you can see that off the coast of Florida, um, there's a grid of many different permit possibilities. Four permits to begin testing in the Atlantic are being reviewed in Tallahassee right now. There are none under review in the Gulf of Mexico off our Gulf Coast at the moment, but that could change and I'll talk about that in a moment. Um, you can see that there is huge opposition to the Gulf of Mexico, um, being expanded for offshore oil exploration or drilling and to the Atlantic, um, which is currently being reviewed. Um, over five hundred local elected officials, members of, um, the Senate and House of Representatives, every major port city, um, on the Atlantic coast, um, and actually it says eighty-five cities, it's now eighty-eight cities on the east coast, twenty-three cities in Florida, four of which are here, um, in your area on the Gulf Coast, seventy-five leading marine scientists, fishery and, um, management associations and councils, et cetera. Um, in addition to, um, all of those experts and elected officials, Floridians are saying no to seismic airgun blasting and our elected officials are taking a stand by passing city and county resolutions opposing this threat to our ocean ecosystems and our coastal economies. And I love this slide because we have a, a local, um, person in St. Augustine who made a whale and put hearing protection, um, on the whale and brought it to one of the rallies that we held, um, on St. Augustine Beach. So eighty-five, um, cities and counties, actually eighty-eight as of today, twenty-three in Florida have passed resolutions saying no to this, um, activity and this threat to marine mammals and our ocean ecosystems. Um, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection sent a letter to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management requesting that this type of permitting not be, um, done off the coast of Florida because of the lack of reliable scientific information on impacts to marine mammals. Um, we've talked already about, um, the impact to tourism, recreation, and coastal economies, as Joan mentioned, um, in the area. Um, and over twenty fishing communities would be at risk for the potential damage to, um, commercial and recreational fishing catches if this activity were to occur off our coasts. One of the other reasons we have, there's so much opposition to seismic airgun blasting is, is the first step towards offshore drilling. Um, it's the first step towards industrialization of the coast. Um, if anyone has ever been to a Texas or Louisiana coastal refinery town, I don't think that's something that you'd like to see on the coast of, um- It's the first step towards industrialization of the coast. If anyone has ever been to a Texas or Louisiana coastal refinery town, I don't think that's something that you'd like to see on the coast of beautiful Punta Gorda, or on Charlotte Harbor. There's the potential for another huge disaster if offshore exploration were to lead to drilling in the Gulf of Mexico, or off the Atlantic coast of Florida. And, in fact, from 2011 to 2014, there are no numbers for 2015 yet, there were over 477 fires and explosions as a result of offshore oil exploration and drilling. And any one of those could have been a BP Deepwater Horizon, we were just very, very lucky that they, that they weren't. It's a very, very dangerous and dirty industry. Nothing has changed since the BP Deepwater Horizon, not one piece of legislation has been passed by the federal government to change seismic airgun blasting procedures or drilling safety. There are no cleanup method changes, and there's not a capacity in Florida to handle a large spill if one were to take place. We're fortunate in Florida that we have a lot of elected officials that are opposing and have sponsored legislation to prevent this kind of activity from taking place off the coast of Florida. As you can see, Representative Jolly and Representative Clausen have sponsored a bill that would extend the moratorium on offshore drilling right here off the coast of Southwest Florida for another five years. However, a group of senators from outside the state of Florida are trying to do the exact opposite. And this bill was proposed by a Louisiana senator, senator and co-sponsored by Oklahoma and Alaska senator. And if became, if this became law, it would immediately open up the Gulf Coast of Florida to offshore oil exploration and drilling to within 50 miles. Just as a reminder, the BP Deepwater Horizon rig was 49 and a half miles off the coast. So within 50 miles doesn't mean that a potential accident or that an oil spill would stop at that 50-mile marker. So I'm certainly encouraging the city of Punta Gorda to join the other 88 coastal communities and the other 23 in the state of Florida by taking a stand and considering a resolution to stop seismic airgun blasting and the offshore drilling that it could, it could lead to offshore coast. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Ray Judah to discuss fracking with you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and, and Council. My name is Ray Judah, I'm coordinator with the Florida Coastal and Ocean Coalition. I do want to thank you very much for providing the opportunity for Erin Handy with Oceana. I know Oceana is a member of the Florida Coastal and Ocean Coalition, and myself to talk to you about really two very serious issues. You just heard, of course, from Erin with regards to seismic airgun blasting, but also with regards to fracking. And I know you're all aware of the pending legislation that's going to be before the legislature this 2016 session. There lies a sense of urgency as to why we're here making the presentation to you, particularly on fracking. Let me, first of all, digress just real quickly, and I'll be brief. I, I just wanted to let all of you know, as a former Lee County Commissioner, 24 years, I am so deeply impressed with the revitalization of Punta Gorda. Ever since 2004, the, the resiliency of the community, and certainly the vision of the leadership, has just been astounding. You provide a tremendous example to the nation with regards to recognizing the importance of, of putting in the appropriate infrastructure, but also the sense of community that you've developed in Punta Gorda. I just want to congratulate you on that. I also wanted to point out that former Mayor Freeland and also Joan LeBeau, of course, were invited by our Florida Coastal and Ocean Coalition and our partnership with the Florida Gulf Coast University back in May, when we held a Sea Level Rise Summit. And it was really our honor to provide that award and recognition to Punta Gorda for your vision and leadership with your Adaptation Action Plan concerning sea level rise. With regards to fracking, I know that there's a various amount of knowledge and understanding of fracking. I think intuitively, people think of the high-pressure injection into the bedrock to, to frac the rock, allowing for the oil to, to flow freely up to the surface. And unfortunately, what we have in, in our area in this state with a geologic strata that's a karst formation, very porous and permeable limestone, it's a whole different ballgame here in Florida. And we're very concerned about the methodology and the techniques that are, and have been already utilized with regards to fracking in the state of Florida. The, the one example I can give you is right down in Cuyahoga County, where a oil company out of Texas actually violated its permit by proceeding with acid fracking. And the conservancy of Southwest Florida, the Cuyahoga County Commission eventually got the Department of Environmental Protection to revoke the, the permit because of its violation of the permit conditions. There really isn't a regulatory mechanism to deal with fracking in the state of Florida. And unfortunately, there is a Trojan horse with the two fracking bills, Senate Bill 318 and House Bill 191, that'll be considered by the legislature this session. I say Trojan horse, because it doesn't adequately address acid fracking. We're not dealing with the type of breaking of rock here in the state of Florida. We're looking at the utilization of drilling fluids with acid that actually dissolve the limestone. And you can imagine the horror when you recognize that the State Department of Environmental Protection actually has taken a position that only 700 feet of limestone would be, would be adequate to separate the drilling fluids, the sulfuric acid, the carcinogens, the benzene, tyuane, and all that is in the drilling, drilling fluids, from the fluorinocifer. The fluorinocifer, which is relied on by some 92% of the people in the state of Florida, is our water supply. So the impact to, and contamination of our water supply is of great concern. I do want to point out that with regards to the pending legislation, please, hopefully you understand that what is being proposed is to preempt local governments from banning fracking. And, and, you know, I, I think it's always been said that the government governs best, that's closest to the people. And so the long arm of state government here is trying to actually preempt your authority under Chapter 163 of Florida statutes, to be able, through zoning regulations, to regulate fracking. And in so doing, perhaps ban fracking, which is what Benita Springs did, which is what Astero is planning on doing in December, and other communities throughout the country. But right here in the state of Florida, you have the authority through Chapter 163 with regards to zoning, to ban fracking. And that's what I implore you to consider doing, because with the legislature convening in January and being beholden to the oil and gas industry, they probably are going to end up supporting or approving some type of banning, some type of fracking regulation. And currently, that proposed regulation does preempt local governments from having any oversight of fracking. Furthermore, they don't deal with the disposal of the drilling fluids, they don't perform, they don't provide for the revealing of the chemicals that are being used. If anyone knows about the importance of first responders, it's Punta Gorda. And certainly, your first responder should know the list of chemicals that are being used in the drilling fluids of fracking, and that should be first and foremost included in the, in the bill. So recognizing that New York, after seven-year study, banned fracking, that Pennsylvania studies have indicated there's a direct correlation between the contamination of water supplies and fracking, the geologic strata is not suitable here in the state of Florida. I'm hopeful that you all perhaps consider setting up a couple of public hearings, hopefully before the end of next legislative session, to ban fracking. And I'm here to answer any questions, you've been very patient, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any such model ordinance? Because I know when, you know, we were one of the last adopters of the fertilizer ordinance, but there was, I think the Regional Planning Council is the one that crafted the model ordinance. Because, you know, obviously, we, we are trying to be conscious of spending legal dollars on something that, you know, may not even, I don't even know if we have the landmass here at this point, where they would even consider doing fracking. So if, if there's any model language that you have, maybe you could submit it to us, and then we could consider that.
I'd like to address that question. When you look at where the potential oil deposits are, it's going to be 10, 20, 50 years maybe before they come to Punta Gorda. But those deposits do start to, the known deposits do start to encroach into the Punta Gorda city limits in Har, in Charlotte Harbor. That's number one. Number two, I want to thank both of our presentate, present, presenters, but I don't think they actually go far enough. And I'm a person that's not anti-fracking in the appropriate places. I've had, my career has been involved in this. It's one, it's one thing to run an air cannon off the shore, or it's another thing to run a thumper through the Everglades that's going to create environmental damage that was not addressed in the presentation, which really has a similar type of environmental impact to a fragile, versus going through a just harvested wheat field in North Dakota. Or going through a, a prairie in Wyoming. They have different issues, they have different types of deposits. Fracking, when done responsibly and good, and good, done responsibly in the appropriate types of geographies, can be a very viable source for our country for energy, both in gas and oil, for feedstocks, for future chemicals, and so forth, et cetera. But with that said, this, to me, from a Punta Gorda standpoint, from our standpoint, what's really close to us home right now, it's really a mineral rights control issue. We've just gone through this in a, in a minor way, where we were able to come up with an elegant solution, but it's, it's about who controls mineral, mineral rights within our borders. If any of you besides me have lived in California in the 50s, I remember an oil derrick within sight of my school playr, play yard, inside the, the city limits of North Hollywood. So to say that that can't happen, it can happen. And it's just a overall feeling of mineral rights that we should do, and also to protect our pristine environment. That's why we live here in Punta Gorda, why we do live on the West Coast. So I think we need to support this even more aggressively than we're being asked to today in the future. That's all I want to say right now.
If I may, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, very good points. I did want to point out that we in no way object to conventional oil drilling practices. So with regards to those property owners that would suggest that perhaps they'd be denied being able to extract resources within their property, conventional drilling is perfectly fine. It's the unconventional extreme oil extraction, including fracking. Yes, we do have a template ordinance that we could provide to you from Benita Springs, and we'd be happy to do so.
I think that would be appropriate, and then, you know, we can look at it that way.
Actually, it's attached.
Is it?
It's the last two pages.
It's in our
Joan is very efficient.
Yes.
Laura, league of senators taking a position on this at this point?
No, no, Florida League, I don't believe, I was on the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources, it really did not come up this last committee session. Not sure if you have scheduled meetings with them, or
We are attempting to. We have tried to make some inroads. It's a very contentious, controversial issue that they don't know if they want to weigh in on right this time. So it's really up to the local communities from the ground up to make the point.